Good evening, everybody. We're going to reconvene this meeting. We had an executive session earlier, starting at 6:00. I apologize for the delay. I know it was hot in the hallway. It was something that couldn't be avoided. So, thank you for your patience. And at this point in time, we're going to continue our meeting at the superintendent's report. Mr. Rashida?
Yep, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just so you're aware of it, I'm sure you are already, but we do have a moving up ceremony tomorrow evening at the McAppan School at 7:00 PM, where our eighth graders will be recognized for their accomplishments and moving on up to the high school. So, we invite you to join us there if you're available. And then, the high school graduation will take place on Thursday evening. That is at 6:45 on the field. And, weather permitting, that's where it will stay. So, hopefully, that's where that will be. Final exams are almost over. Unfortunately, you probably received the call from myself and maybe one or two of the other principals involved here in regards to a bomb scare that took place today at the high school, which certainly did disrupt the testing schedule. So, they're behind one exam, so we're going to give that tomorrow. And then, we'll be all in place and everybody should be fine. So, that's what's going to happen. We look forward to the end of the school year. We have lots of things planned to incorporate during the summer within the district, so we're going to take care of that. And, you know, that's where we are. But I'm going to move over to the other microphone and stand there for a minute because there's someone I'd like to acknowledge. So, we were recently made aware of the fact that, you know, we spoke about Teacher of the Year, and we had all kinds of recognitions and things that we did even last week. We had a major recognition over at McAppan School. So, actually, it was this school downstairs. And so, this goes out to Ms. Jacqueline Becker. And this is, I'm going to read it to you. Congratulations, you are the 2015 New Jersey History Teacher of the Year. The Gilda Lehman Institute of American History is honored to celebrate the outstanding work that you do in the classroom. A panel of teachers, administrators, and scholars from your state selected you for use of primary documentations in the classroom. The level of inspiration you provide to your students and the career achievements in your education. We thank you for engaging students with dedication and creativity. Jacqueline, please come up here and accept this award. Wait right there because Mr. Matt Los has never had a loss for words, and I'm sure he'd like to share some information as well. So...
Thank you so much for coming, everybody, tonight. In regards to the Department of History and Social Sciences, we are so proud of Ms. Becker. And also, being, of course, on the New Jersey Council for History Education, I was informed today that Ms. Becker actually will be recognized at Princeton University on December the 4th, 2015, in front of nationally-recognized historians, teachers from just across the state, across the country that come to this conference. So, yes, West Milford will be receiving some PR from Ms. Becker. And, of course, we do appreciate it. She is a fantastic teacher. So, of course, I do have to applaud her again.
Oh, it's for pictures. That's it.
I just want to say thank you because, obviously, I don't like to talk very much in front of big groups unless you're 10 years old. It's just really important for me to thank us people in my life because this is not something that you do on your own. My mom was a West Milford teacher for 30 years.
30 years, yes.
And, you know, as a kid, my parents always took me to Civil War reenactments. So, history's been a part of my life. And I specifically chose to be an elementary education major with history. And I feel very fortunate. I just want to thank my mentor who came, Seem McAvoy, and Mr. Matt Lewis and Mrs. Primavera, and my other colleagues who came because I'm definitely only as good as the people I work with. So, I feel very fortunate. So, thank you.
So, that is all I have to report tonight. And again, congratulations, Jacqueline.
Thank you, Mr. Rashida. Special reports and correspondence, Mrs. Francisco.
I have the minutes from May 19th to May 26th. I apologize for not getting them due until next day. It's been a little hectic in the office the last few weeks, but they are there. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following meeting minutes. Workshop Special Action Meeting of May 19th, 2015. Executive Session of May 19th, 2015. Regular Meeting of May 26th, 2015. And Executive Session of May 26th, 2015. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
On all minutes, Mr. Bush?
Yes.
I am abstaining from Workshop Special Action Meeting as well as Executive Session Meeting, both of May 19th, 2015, as I was not present. Thank you. President's Report. Please note in your packets that the New Jersey School Boards Association workshop dates are actually set already. And if you don't know if you're going to go this year or not, I would advise that you review the packet and look through it. It's very informative. You learn a lot. There's a lot of workshops to attend. You can learn as much as you want. You can attend as much as you want. It's a good networking opportunity. So, please take note of that. That's in your packet. And speaking of New Jersey School Boards, we, as a West Milford Board of Education, will not be filling out or doing the Survey Monkey as far as the superintendent's evaluation votes. Since we do have an interim at this point in time, it's not necessary for Mr. Rashida to fill out his portion, as he only started in December. And so, it's twofold. It wouldn't be necessary for us to complete that as well. So, I just wanted to let you know about that. That concludes my report. With that, we need to move on to approving the agenda as presented. Any motion? I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Please, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each petitioner for a period of 30 minutes. And then, time permitting, other petitions and requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed until the 30-minute period transpires. Petitioners speaking during petitions and requests are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. Would anybody like to come up and speak? Seeing none, move to close. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each petitioner for a period of 30 minutes. And then, time permitting, other petitions and requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed until the 30-minute period transpires. Petitioners speaking during petitions and requests are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. Would anybody like to come up and speak? Seeing none, move to close. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I would just like to note, I had mentioned this earlier, but we weren't televised and we do not have anybody from the public here, but Mr. Bailey is actually at a retirement dinner for Coach Poppy. Unfortunately, his retirement dinner was scheduled the same night as the board's ed meeting, but that's because a lot of things kind of get crazy at the end of the school year, as many of you know. And since he is considered a keynote speaker this evening, he is going to plan on doing his job there at the Ransome in honor of Coach Poppy. And then, his plan was to come right up here afterwards. So, I just wanted noted that he had a conflict of interest, and it was out of his control that he was late. So, we're going to move on to education. Mrs. Kepi, would you mind moving?
Sure. Under education, I'd like to approve item number one, which are the Hibb reports, which is Incident 2015 E-13 is unsubstantiated, and 2015 slash E-14 is substantiated.
Second. Any discussion? Mrs. Francisco, roll call, please. Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepi?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Under education, I'd like to approve items, make a motion to approve items number two through 11.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call? Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepi?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Under education, I'd like to move, to approve item number 12.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call? Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepi?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
That would conclude education?
That's it for education, sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Kepi. Okay, we can move on to Budget and Finance.
Before we do that, there's one correction I'd like the board to be aware of. Number 38 under Budget and Finance, it's Weatherbug Outdoor Lightning Alert System, not lighting alert. What number again, please?
Number 38. Page 18?
Page 18, yes. At the bottom. It should say Weatherbug Outdoor Lightning Alert System.
That's an awful expensive bug zapper.
Mr. Drew, would you mind moving the items under Budget and Finance, please? Including the hand carries which are on the green sheet?
Sure, I'd like to move items one to five, as written.
Second. Discussion?
I'd like to have number one as, I guess we could do, we could do this as a discussion, I guess. On number one, we are, I guess, rehiring, reappointing our special ed and negotiations attorney in light of allegations that were brought forth from a parent regarding this firm. I can't support reappointing that firm. And those allegations were serious, I think, in nature, and I think they were taken way too lightly by this board.
I just want to make sure we don't go too far.
That, I know. That's why I'm keeping it the way I'm saying it, Joe. Don't worry. Wouldn't you say that I'm...
I see you're right on the line.
Well, I'm right on the line, I know. And I'm not going any further. But I can't support, and I would, I would hope that the board wouldn't support that as well. And in voting on this, Joe, I can vote yes on the other appointments and pull them out separately.
You could just say which ones you're voting yes or no for.
Yeah, 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 okay. All right.
Any other discussion?
So, we're pulling out item one? No, no.
No, that was just a comment that was made.
The motion is one through five.
Yep.
And if you're voting no on any part of anything, you can, separate, you can just mention it.
All right.
So, that was for items number one to five.
One to five.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepi?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
I'll abstain on number one and yes on two, three, four, five.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to move item six for consideration by the board, number of signatures required on various accounts.
Why aren't you going to turn them off? Why aren't you...
Because I want to amend this.
Okay.
Yes, six only.
Second. Any discussion?
I would like to amend item six. This is exactly what I do as a professional, is help banks and companies determine how to authorize these kinds of things. The largest account that we transfer pay funds out of is payroll. And I would like to make two signatures required on payroll, payroll agency, and payroll medical.
So, you want to make a motion to amend?
So, I'm making a motion to amend item six to make two signatures required for payroll, payroll agency, payroll agency medical.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just say for a point of order in the future, if we want to amend a motion like this, we should do it before we approve the agenda as presented, because then we don't have to do a separate motion to amend. We can discuss it and then approve it as amended. It's just easier that way. So, that's just for the future.
Okay.
Just a point of order.
Point well taken.
Is there any discussion on this?
Actually, I just want to make sure with Barbara that two signatures is, although I'm not sure how we're checked or written or...
It's been that way since I've been here, by, you know, one signature.
This is exactly how fraud is committed, and you find out later you should have done it.
I just want to, right, I agree. I just want to make sure that's possible, that we can get that changed.
I wouldn't have to check with the bank. I don't imagine that's a problem.
I don't see why.
You just have to have one of the signature cards.
Second line, yeah. Can we approve this now and amend it later for second signatures, after we find out the legalities of making it two signatures?
Is there any motion on the table that's been brought up and seconded?
Well, there's a motion to amend it, to change payroll, payroll agency, and medical to one to two signatures, not one. So, that's what, that's the motion, is just to amend this.
Right now, we're discussing the amendment. I didn't want to take a lot of time.
Not two to one. Correct?
One to one.
Right. I thought you said the other way around.
Can I call the question?
If there's no other discussions.
So, we're voting on the amendment.
Amen.
Mr. Babbitt?
No.
Mr. Dever?
I abstain from it because I don't have all the information to satisfy myself.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepi?
Abstain.
Mrs. O'Brien?
No.
Mr. Robbins?
Yeah.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes, if we're able to do that according to the law, then yes.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm confused.
The yes is voting on the amendment.
To require two signatures.
That's what I'm, that's what I want. I apologize.
You said yes.
Bless you. Yes, yes, not no, yes.
So, there's only four yeses?
There's five. With that change. So, now...
Now, we vote on the original issue that's amended.
And it's already changed, it's...
Yep.
So, that's with including the two signatures.
The amendment carries, so the motion, we're voting now is number six. We have two signatures on it every time.
Okay, so that would be for two signatures.
Mr. Babbitt?
No.
Mr. Dever?
Again, I'm going to abstain from it because I don't have all the information to satisfy myself.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepi?
Abstain.
Mrs. O'Brien?
No.
Mr. Robbins?
Yeah.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes, if we're able to do that according to the law, then yes.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm confused.
The yes is voting on the amendment.
To require two signatures.
That's what I'm, that's what I want. I apologize.
You said yes.
Bless you. Yes, yes, not no, yes.
So, there's only four yeses?
There's five. With that change.
Now, we vote on the original issue that's amended.
And it's already changed, it's...
Yep.
So, that's with including the two signatures.
The amendment carries, so the motion, we're voting now is number six. We have two signatures on it every time.
Okay, so that would be for two signatures. Mr. Babbitt?
No.
Mr. Dever?
Again, I'm going to abstain from it because I don't have all the information to satisfy myself.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepi?
I'm going to abstain because I think this should have been brought up and discussed and worked through first, and I don't like the process, so I'm going to abstain, but it's a good idea, but I'd like to know more about it.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes. I do agree with Mrs. Kepi, though it should have been brought up ahead of time.
Motion carries.
I'd like to move item seven.
Second.
Yeah.
Second. Any discussion?
I'd like to point out in the final sentence of item seven that it allows us to authorize the bank to move funds, disperse funds, so on and so forth, acting alone. And that should be removed, those words. So, I am recommending we remove the words "acting alone" from the final sentence in the now, therefore. So, I'm making a motion to do that.
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to send another motion to amend.
Yes.
Do we, to, of course, give a...
And it's to be consistent with, you don't want to have the ability to, for one person to give an electronic authorization to a bank to move a million dollars, that's how fraud occurs. So, it's going to take two.
So, you want the words "acting alone" to be removed?
Yes, the amendment is to delete "acting alone" from authorizations to the bank.
Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call? And we're voting on the...
Just on the...
It was a motion to second.
On the motion amended, I seconded.
Right. Mr. Babbitt?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Dever?
I'm going to abstain again. It would be consistent with the first one we changed, though.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepi?
Abstain.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Abstain.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
According to our attorney, he doesn't see a problem with it. Again, I would have preferred this being discussed prior, but I'm going to say yes.
So, now it's...
So, now we vote on the original motion.
Yes, the original motion, which is already moved.
Unless there's discussion about it.
I will say that the motion, if there's later discussion, we could always...
You'd like a motion to second on that?
We do.
Yes.
On the original motion?
Yes, I was the second.
And I would just seriously recommend not authorizing the bank to disperse or move funds.
So, you see, thank you.
Yep.
Mrs. O'Brien?
I just want to clarify, can we readdress this at a later time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, it's as originally...
Well, yeah, it's as originally...
Do you see a problem with it, Mr. Attorney? The way it's written now?
No, because it's officer or seniority of the board acting alone. So, it's not the bank that we're giving the approval to. It's somebody from the board. And when you say officer of the board, it means the board president or vice president of the board, the president's absence. So, I'm assuming this is how the motion has always been written. I don't see we're authorizing the bank to do anything with our money without our authorization, the board, I should say. But we could always come back to this if there's an issue or some further investigation.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call? Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes, because we can come back to this at a later time.
Mr. Drew?
No.
Mr. Foodie?
No.
Mrs. Kepi?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes, because we can go back to this at a later time and readdress it if necessary.
Mr. Robbins?
No.
Mrs. Schultz?
Now that Mr. Roselli explained it, and it's not the bank making electronic withdrawals, acting alone, I vote yes.
Mr. Drew, thank you very much. Would you mind if I just...
That's fine.
Send it over to the Chair of Budget and Finance, Mr. Bailey?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Bailey.
Good evening. First, in tonight's episode, I'm generally late, but tonight I actually have a good reason. I was speeding up for Patterson, as for some reason, there was the retirement dinner for Coach Poppy scheduled tonight, the same time as the board meeting. It's a busy time of the year for everybody. As you can imagine, Mr. Bailey is one of the featured speakers, and I made sure that I relayed greetings from this assembled body, honoring one of our, you know, longtime iconic employees, Coach Poppy. It's up to you and those that follow you to replace these guys. How you do it, I do not know, because he's a true West Milford person. So, that's where I was tonight. I'm sorry, I'm here now. What am I doing, moving like nine through whatever? Are we going over these individually?
We're starting on number eight, Mr. Bailey. Proceed.
So, we can go like, Mr. Bailey would like to move items number eight through...
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven under Budget and Finance?
Second.
Appropriate?
Yes.
Right?
Second.
Okay, good. I'm in. So we can go like, Mr. Bailey would like to move items number eight through.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven under budget and finance?
Second.
Appropriate? Right?
Second.
Okay, good, amen, that's what I moved.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, what was that, eight through?
Eight through forty-seven.
So if I wanted to discuss one of these separately.
I do the yes. There's a hand up over here, sorry. Mr. Foodie.
I would like to pull for a separate vote. Nine, eleven, twenty-five, forty, and forty-seven.
Can you repeat those again?
Nine, eleven, twenty-five?
Nine, eleven, twenty-five, forty, and forty-seven. Because we were doing nine, eight, through forty-seven?
Yes. Mr. Drew, did you have something to discuss?
Um, no, Mr. Foodie's asked for one of the items I wanted to discuss separately.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, any items to discuss?
We're going to pull those for separate votes, and we'll discuss those separately, okay? All right, I'm good.
No.
Just to clarify now, this motion is for number eight, ten, twelve to twenty-four.
Eight, eight, yeah, yeah, you're right.
Ten, twelve to twenty-four, twenty-six to thirty-nine, and forty-one to forty-six.
Yep. Forty-one, forty-seven.
You don't make that motion.
Hang on a second.
Mr. Bailey.
Just a point of order, if I make the motion to move eight through forty-seven, respectfully if my colleagues want to pull them for a separate vote, doesn't the person who makes the motion have to give any permission, or I'm just cast to the shoulder?
No, in.
Off to the shoulder?
Any woman requests a separate vote for any of them.
Okay, even though the motion's been made. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Even though the agenda's been approved.
Beg your pardon? I couldn't hear that over the crowd's talk, I'm sorry.
And even though the agenda has already been approved.
I got you, okay, thank you, thanks for the clarification.
Okay, any other discussion? Good luck, roll call.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Dever.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
Yes.
Mrs. Keppe.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robbins.
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz.
Yes.
Bill? Bill, proceed.
Yes.
I'd like to move item number forty-seven, please.
Second.
Mr. Foodie.
We approved this agenda as presented, and I would like to start and go through the ones we just skipped before we moved onward.
You mean the ones for a separate vote that we pulled?
Correct, I'd like to try to keep it in order.
Remember what you just did, the forty-seven vote? Forty-seven was on those polls?
No, I. Yeah, yeah, we stopped at forty-seven, we pulled, I'd like to start with nine before we get ahead of ourselves to try to keep this.
Okay, Mr. Bailey. Yes.
Mrs. President, because you're a good president, I like you, if you're about to request, Mr. Bailey, to go in a logical order, I would seriously consider that, is that what you want?
I'm requesting a second for item number forty-seven that you suggested to move.
Sorry, thank you, Mrs. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Second.
Any discussion on item number forty-seven? Mr. Foodie.
This resolution is to accept a donation of supplemental entertainment lighting valued at over six thousand dollars for the West Milford High School auditorium. I think it's great that we can get this from the West Milford High School P T S O, but I would request that nothing be done until we're sure that that roof does not leak.
Okay, duly noted.
So I would like to amend that, to read after the roof has been repaired. Do I have a second? Yeah, that's what I'm making.
I just, can I ask a question? I'm concerned, I think the intention on this is for it to be a wall-mounted unit, so I don't know if that makes any difference to you, it's not something coming from the ceiling.
I've seen that ceiling totally.
Oh, I know, I'm just saying.
Is there a second?
All right.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Would you want to say something, Mr. Roselli?
I was going to, I'm just not sure what the P T S O's schedule for this is, but I know I need that later.
I just would hate to put in a piece of equipment to donate it, and because that roof leaks, has considerable leaks, I would hate to throw away sixty-four hundred dollars that the P T S O has given us.
Thank you, and Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. To think I was going to stay at Patterson, enjoy a retirement dinner, find food and what have you, and miss this, I'm so glad I sped up Hamburg Turnpike to Mockupin Road with hands on my various, never mind, probably I didn't get a speeding ticket, because I'm just so glad I'm here, because I love this stuff and I wouldn't miss it. And let me tell you how, I'm going to vote no, because it's an age-old prophecy, probably embedded in maybe the first or second grade level books that adorned the shelves of this fine thing, the library, about looking a gift horse in the mouth. And here we are as a board, considering voting no against something that comes from one of the many organizations, and probably not enough attention paid to the numerous types of situations that come across our desk here. So in other words, in tonight's episode, we're actually considering voting against a donation. I really can't fathom that, I can't wrap my arms around it, and I'm going to vote no. And I hope that the people that are behind this don't feel disrespected in any way, shape, or form, but it just doesn't get any better. So I'll be voting no against this, and I think to think that somebody would donate something, and to think that we would install this item, or use these funds, in a way that would lead them to be damaged, or in some type of a substandard situation, absolutely I can't fathom. So emphatically, when we get to the vote, I'll be voting no, because I don't believe in that, I'd rather vote yes and thank them to death for making a sixty-four hundred dollar donation, it's, I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey, Mrs. O'Brien.
I am, the president of the P T S O is a very dear friend of mine, I've known her for at least twenty years, she is the most meticulous person I have ever met, and she would not take a donation and jeopardize it. And she would do it in the best interest of the school and aware of the surroundings as well, so I will be voting no as well.
To the amendment.
To the amendment, okay? Because she is aware of it, and she would not do anything to jeopardize that.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien, Mr. Foodie.
You know, I'm not saying no to this donation, I don't know what you people are thinking, I, it's amendment to delay the donation until the roof is repaired. I accept a donation, I think it's great, if you people would listen to what I'm saying, there's so much hatred towards me on this board, I'm getting a little bit sick of it, but I'm not saying no to this donation.
You're amending it.
I just want to amend it so that we take the donation after that roof is repaired. We're going to vote tonight on spending, I think we already did, to spend seventeen thousand dollars, I believe it was, Barbara, or ten thousand dollars to repair that roof at the auditorium, I just want to ensure that that donation is kept safe by us amending the resolution just to say we'll take it after the roof is repaired. I'm not saying no to the amendment, to the donation.
Thank you, thank you, anybody else? Mrs. O'Brien.
Okay, I don't want to play point, counterpoint, I like watching that on Saturday night live, I don't want to be part of it in real life, Mr. Foodie, I am not disagreeing with you.
You're talking to the board.
Yes. I'm not disagreeing with those, with the concern that, you know, we're jeopardizing this. It says we're accepting a donation, it doesn't say it's already been installed, it's not already in its place, we don't know that, we're assuming that, assuming is not a very good thing. I'm voting that we accept the donation, whether it's where it is in the scheme of things, whether it's going to be installed now, whether it's been installed, whether it's going to be installed down the road, that's, you know, that's something we don't, I'm not going to worry about.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Anybody else?
Any questions on the amendment?
Yes, so there's a motion for the amendment for, to accept the donation with the added words "after the roof is replaced," so that's what we're going to be voting on first.
After the roof is repaired.
After the roof is repaired. Mr. Babbitt.
No.
Mr. Bailey.
No.
Mr. Dever.
I'm going to vote no, why, because I trust that the people will utilize the money in the proper manner as they find it out.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
Yes.
Mrs. Keppe.
No.
Mrs. O'Brien.
No.
Mr. Robbins.
I'm going to vote no, trusting that there will be a delay in installing this device.
Mrs. Schultz. I'm voting no on the amendment, because I believe that the P T S O and the people at the high school that would be installing this would know to install it, not where it would be leaking. Common sense.
Now there's a motion to accept forty-seven after.
Right, we have a first and a second? Is there any more discussion on item forty-seven as it stands on the agenda, the way it's printed? Seeing none, will you please have a roll call?
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Dever.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
Yes.
Mrs. Keppe.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robbins.
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz.
Yes, and I thank the P T S O, that's a very generous donation.
I'd like to move item number eleven, under budget and finance, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, excuse me, Mr. Foodie.
We had the same transfer authorization, we want full resolution, last June, and I just want to read, some, whereas general compliance with this rule has been a consistent practice of the township of West Milford Board of Education, and whereas despite this frequent attention, some transfers have taken place after the account shows a deficit balance. If I'm reading this right, we want to have these transfers done before there's a deficit balance. And last year, we did this in June, in July, we transferred a couple hundred thousand dollars because of line item deficits. I hope that doesn't occur again this year. And that's all I have to say.
Any other discussion?
Quick question.
Mr. Dever.
Does this allow us to go into the deficit prior to transferring these items? No, all this, all this motion says is that all transfers are going to be in compliance with law.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. We have a roll call, please, on item, agenda number eleven, please.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Dever.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
Yes.
Mrs. Keppe.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robbins.
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz.
Yes.
I'd like to move item number.
Nine?
Nine, under budget and finance, please.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Foodie.
Joe, I'm going to ask this question of you, it deals with unauthorized purchases. It says unauthorized purchases are a violation of state law, and for the audience, anything over thirty-six thousand, that's our bid threshold, without, you know, approval, I guess, would be a violation of state law. What are the penalties for that violation of state law?
What this paragraph says is that for any board employee ordering anything.
Yes.
Without the approval process.
Yep.
Which means, you know, administration approval, purchase orders, and then eventually board approval. So the penalties for something that happens under that could be any disciplinary action from reprimand all the way up to termination, depending on what it is. And the board would also have problems with audits and things like that, so.
Okay, it says unauthorized purchases, violation of state law, I was just wondering, are there any penalties for violating?
Whatever the law has.
Civil penalties or anything?
Yeah, I mean, does the state step in and say, you know?
No, we would be hit on the audit, we'd be hit on the U S A C, that for the board itself, that kind of thing, but the penalties here are disciplinary actions against.
Okay.
Employees who do this.
If I can clarify, it also means confirming purchase orders, where somebody calls a vendor and orders stuff without putting in a purchase order.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I was just curious what that meant. I'm sure it happens.
Not often.
Although I will say, a number of unauthorized purchases could involve a state investigation if there was anything like that, and then they would require us to reimburse the state in the exact amount of money, so there could be some financial penalties, maybe a year or so, demoralizing, but the audit would uncover that, and then we would address it before that got to that point. But as far as I know, this is not an issue, it's just to put it in here as a.
Our audit just really checks anyone who comes in.
It hasn't come up on any of our audits.
The audit reviews every purchase order.
No, they check everything.
Yes, they do.
They check to make sure that the purchase order is prior to the invoice, they test everything.
It's very low.
Yes, we do know that. Any other questions? Hey, can we please vote on this question?
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Dever.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
Yes.
Mrs. Keppe.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robbins.
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz.
Yes.
To move item number forty, under budget and finance, please.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Drew.
This is a very substantial amount of money, three-quarters of a million dollars, that we are moving into excess current revenue, which I take to mean it was not budgeted, and that is almost the entire amount of the tax increase for last year, and to me, that's saying, we didn't need that tax increase. I am very concerned about a process that leads us to have this kind of money left over to where we say, oops, now, I agree in principle that we ought to be putting money into a capital reserve account. We should plan for that in advance, and I'm very concerned that we wind up with those kinds of excesses after we have assessed the taxpayers that kind of money.
Thank you, Mr. Drew, Mr. Dever.
Do we know how much is in capital reserve at this time?
We have appropriated money in the fifteen sixteen budget, we appropriated eight hundred sixty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars, and after that appropriation, our balance would be seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. If you recall, I've talked often of the remediation down at transportation, once we have a program that's approved by the Department of Environmental Protection, we're going to have to do a remediation down there, it's going to definitely cost us more than seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in order to get that done. So basically, what I'm attempting to do is transfer up to seven hundred and fifty thousand, because we really don't know what our excess is going to be at this point, and so that'll just bolster that account so that we won't have to cut other areas' programs when we finally have to do that remediation at transportation. You also have roofing projects that hopefully will have a successful referendum, if there's not a successful referendum, then our repairs or replacements, if we're going to, if we have to do it in sections, is going to have to come from the capital reserve account. So, Mr. Bailey.
Mrs. President, may I direct a question to our business administrator, to the chair about item forty? At the risk of putting everybody in this room to sleep, because this is a county one-on-one, which you're good at, we make these statements about connecting the tax increase, which by the way, is one of the lowest in the area, if you read the Bergen Record cover to cover like I do every day, and we try to make this, we jump from a tax increase to what I perceive to be boilerplate business administration maneuvering, looking into the future to make sure that what you think needs to be done, whether it's remediation of polluted soil, whether it's leaks in the roof, whatever it may be, that you don't even know about, but your job is to make sure that when these things come up, and you know they're going to come up, because you're experienced at this, and you're running the West Milford School District, the business side of it, so this is something you want to do, to make sure that you're able to make the appropriate move, so that we can continue in September, open up the place, and have another successful school year. Correct? This isn't anything about, not circumventing, moving funds around to reduce the tax bite that we have to pay here at West Milford, which everybody wants to do in their right mind, nobody wants to pay higher taxes. So to hear the connection made between tax increase and something you're doing, could you give me thirty seconds to put my mind at ease, to show me and the public and anybody else who cares, that they're not necessarily connected? Go ahead.
The only other opportunity that the board would have in order to make a deposit to capital reserve would be during the budget process, which basically takes place in March. So we would have to have a better idea in March that we were going to have significant or money in order to transfer to capital reserve. The law also gives us the opportunity to do it in the month of June, because at that point, you have a better idea of what your surpluses are going to be. point, you have a better idea of what your surpluses are going to be based upon the fact that most of your purchasing, all of your purchasing is just about completed. And so the state law gives us that opportunity to make transfers to capital reserve, maintenance reserve, and emergency reserve in the month of June. Thank you. Mr. Dever?
Just so I'm clear, we have about eight-hundred thousand in capital reserve at this time, and then we're going to add another seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Right. Up to seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. It depends on what the audited amount of surpluses.
Sure. And that's above the two percent that we can also retain, two percent of our total budget.
Right. And we've been using the capital reserve accounts to do the boiler replacements and some of the other repairs that we've done in the district over the last few years.
So if this gets passed, it'll be over one-point-four million in capital reserve.
Right. Yes. Mr. Drew?
I have a quick question. So we're not allowed to change that after the auditors who come in, and we know the actual amounts that we have?
No, it has to... We can, it's up to, the resolution says up to seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. If the audited surplus is only five-hundred thousand, you can't put seven-hundred-and-fifty in. So basically, it goes by the audited surplus.
But if we don't know whether we're going to have a surplus or not until the auditors have looked at the whole thing, we can't come back at that time and...
No. The only time you could authorize the deposit would be this board meeting.
Not knowing the amount.
Or at the budget. Or at the budget. Or during the budget. Somebody else have a question? Mr. Foodie?
Transfer authorizations require us to show where that money is coming from and what account it's going to. I know that it's going to go to capital reserve, but I don't know what accounts it's being pulled from. And that's part of the twenty-three, thirteen, point one, point two, and point three. So I mean, I just, I got a problem with this. You know, we raise the taxes, pull the money out, we're well over one-and-a-half million, up to seven-fifty.
Well, if we have to do one-and-a-half million or two-million-dollar remediation, and we only have seven-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand, we have to raise taxes for that, we're cut program.
I beg to differ with that, with that, Barbara, but that's conversation for another time. When we did our turf field, we had approximately two-thousand tons of soil removed from the turf field. And at that time, the estimate for purchasing fill for the transportation garage was about seventy-six thousand dollars of clean fill. And we needed approximately two-thousand tons. I got a copy of the insurance report that was sent to you, if you need me to...
What's your point, Mr. Foodie?
You know, we gave away a hundred thousand dollars worth of clean fill.
What does that have to do with the capital reserve?
It has a lot to do with it because we keep asking...
Could you make your point, please? Please, make your point.
I'm trying to make my point, but I keep getting interrupted. Isn't that strange how that happens all the time?
You're taking side roads. Get to the point.
No, I'm not taking side roads. You're talking about the transportation garage and money that it's going to cost us, and we gave away almost a hundred thousand dollars of clean fill that we were told had no value to us, but there was a report in our hands that said that there was a value to that.
Mr. Foodie, where was I going to store it for four years?
What about, what about the field left behind?
They share us.
I mean, we had spots to store.
That's over, it's done with, and you couldn't put it up there. How do you put it up there? Who's going to bring it up there?
I just, you know, where's...
All right. Can we please stay on topic? Right now, we're talking about item forty. Is there any other discussion? I think it's time to vote on it, please.
Don't even have anything written down here.
There is a motion.
I made a motion.
And I seconded.
Thank you, Debbie.
Yes.
Very good, Debbie. Okay. Roll call, please. Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
I'm voting no because I believe we retained a two percent of our total budget, plus we already have eight-hundred thousand dollars in capital reserve, so I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Drew?
No.
Mr. Foodie?
No.
Mrs. Keppe?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
No.
Mrs. Schultz?
Because it says up to seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, I'm going to vote yes.
Motion fails.
It does not carry. It has to be a two-thirds vote for a transfer. Seven and six votes.
I believe we went through this last year.
Good.
So I think, maybe I'm wrong, if we need the extra money put in there, is there a way that that amount can be reduced, or should we move on?
Anybody can make a motion to...
Adjust the...
To adjust the amount, or it would be a whole motion, which basically reads the same with a different amount. There's no issue with that. Just not sure what amount would be acceptable.
Mr. Bailey would like to say something?
I'm sorry, Mr. Bailey?
No, I'd like to make a revised motion because, let me make that motion, and I'll come back for discussion.
Okay.
So I would like to move item number forty with a revised amount of seven-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand.
Up to seven-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand?
Absolutely.
Point of parliamentary order. Motion was introduced, seconded, failed. Can't reintroduce it at the same meeting.
Can't reintroduce the same motion, but...
All right. Got it. That's fine.
Just like we've been doing all night.
That's fine.
Is there a second?
Second?
Any discussion?
For seven forty-nine?
Uh huh. Up to seven-hundred.
Up to seven-hundred-and-forty-nine.
Roll call. Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
No.
Mr. Drew?
No.
Mr. Foodie?
No.
Mrs. Keppe?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
No.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Gathering my thoughts, just some of the comments I could make. I would like to make a motion, or I'd like to move item number forty, and I would like the amount to be seven-hundred-and-twenty-five K, not to assign, not to exceed seven-hundred-and-twenty-five K.
Second.
Wouldn't that be new business at point of parliamentary order? Wouldn't that be new business at this point?
Generally, that would be new business. And I will say, there does come a time where these motions are dilatory. Three motions does not that point, but, you know, going forward, if we go down by five-thousand each time, or whatever it is, there should come a time where the motions are dilatory under parliamentary procedure. So if you want to wait till new business to make, although the motion has already been made and seconded, so that motion's for up, but anything further should be a new business.
Mr. Bailey?
Couple of quick points. Counselor, I won't be here for new business. I've got to go to work on Wednesday, so I'll be at work. Sorry. I digress. Next. I've been through this before. I think it's one of our worst hours as a board. Because first and foremost, we're supposed to be here as trustees, as stewards, as custodians, fill in the blank, as people who are elected to do a serious job. And job one is to support the students, the staff, their parents, their caregivers, the employees, anybody else connected with this great thing that we put a lot of time and effort into as elected servants, the West Milford Township Public School System. I've been through this before. I've seen it before. And it saddens me to think that we're here tonight hijacking, derailing, holding up, about to enter into, great word, what did you say? Dilatory?
Dilatory.
Dilatory, will. Over something like this saddens me. So I'll stop, but I'm saddened because what we've effectively done now, and by the way, let me have one more vote because I don't make it seven to two, which is a two-thirds majority required. What we've effectively done was tied the hands of our business administrator, and we have stopped her from doing her job, which is ultimately to provide the best for students, staff, employees, et cetera, in the district. So I don't get that. And if you really wanted to get dramatic, you could almost draw this conclusion that by taking this maneuver and stopping this woman from doing her job, which is what we pay her a lot of money to do, why don't we get right to the point where we're bringing up a vote of no confidence, if you will? That's where we could go with all of this. And we're far from that, or I know I am. So I'll stop. I don't know what's going to happen in new business. The good news is, I won't be here because it'll be Wednesday morning. I got to go to work. So that means you won't need as many votes to carry it. Is it two-thirds assembled?
You would need six votes, although there's a motion right now for seven-twenty-five. It hasn't been...
Right. That's enough. But my point is, Marilyn, I've seen this before, almost with the same cast of characters, and it saddens me, and I think it's one of our worst moments. And I've been through it before, and I hope it works out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Dever?
This board has passed the budget. This board has two percent retained from the budget, and we also have over three-quarters of a million dollars sitting in capital reserve. In my opinion, and I'm not an accountant, we are flush with money.
Mr. Robbins?
You know, my big concern that I'm listening here tonight is that there's some people on this board that gets interrupted and some do not. That's my point.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. My concern is, Mr.... Dever, can you hold that, please? Is we have workshops, these, and we have committee meetings. And yes, these are all great questions, and we all have comments to make about it, but this really should have been discussed prior to this meeting. There's so many other things that are on this agenda that we should have done our due diligence and asked these questions prior to tonight. And this is, how many times, Mr. Foodie, this is the second time on this question?
I would like to point out, yeah, this is going on a third time, but I would like to point out, Marilyn, that we had committee meetings, this was not brought up, we only talked about roof repairs, and there was no workshop this month. We had an awards, in lieu of a workshop, we had an award ceremony. So it couldn't have been brought up any time before.
Okay, but you could have called or emailed, just like you have other emails that go out, it couldn't have been discussed prior.
Now, on the purpose of us here, you make the motion, and what are the next words that come out of your mouth? Discussion. This is where we discuss it.
Thank you. Okay.
You know? When we don't have a workshop, and we don't have it this, told to us at a committee meeting, where else do we discuss it? Because we're discussing this as a board.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Drew?
I'll try to be very quick. I think my responsibilities are to the students, parents, education first, next to the taxpayers, then the employees of the system, and the taxpayers are included in that. I believe, I could be wrong, but I believe there's money in an account, we don't know where it is until we're audited. The money would still be there, and at that time, when we know what it is and where it's coming from, we can probably move it to where we need it. So we can't do a transfer later.
No, not to capital reserve.
Wouldn't go to capital reserve, it would go to where we spend it if we need to spend that money.
No, you can't do it, it would be from surplus. And you can't spend that money, once it's designated a surplus, it just goes into the next year's budget. It gets rolled. You could do a transfer from the two percent of your surplus. The problem with that is that you could only do it after April of any budget year. You could, the county superintendent would not allow, they have to authorize any transfers from balance. Mrs. Keppe, do you have a question?
No, I mean, Mrs. Francisco is our business administrator. I have the feeling that certain board members feel like they know more about numbers, more about money, more about the rules, when we should be relying on what she's saying. If she has concerns that there are major costs coming up that we're going to have to deal with, she's trying to prepare for that. She doesn't have a crystal ball, we can't look into it. What's going to, what's going to happen if this doesn't go through? Students are going to get hurt, and that's really the bottom line. You know, and you've got to think about who's giving the orders and who's listening, you know, you're... You know, you're not respecting her, and it's disheartening.
Mr. Bailey?
I'll go quick. Another thing, too, why we do this now and why the calendar's set up this way. Everybody understands in this room that a lot of these types of projects are, take place, are scheduled and completed during the summertime when the staff and students are here, correct? Okay. So in other words, even, I know that there's always a way to do something at a future meeting, that's the way the system works. I get all of that respectfully. But the fact of the matter is, our next board meeting is in July, and in a two-month recess, basically, we're halfway through. So in other words, all this is laid out to do at this June meeting, it's very important to do tonight, and failure to do it is going to tie our hands and maybe not give us the maneuverability needed to complete some of these projects in the summer. True or false?
Well, our projects that are scheduled for this summer are funded, so that's part of the budget process. However, we will not have this opportunity again to transfer any money into capital reserve until next year's budget process, sixteen seventeen, or next June of 2016. Those are the only opportunities they have. Mr. Dever?
I'll be quick. Everybody here is concerned about the district and the kids. Nobody's going to take money away from them. This is above and beyond the budget. We have budgeted money, we have two percent that's held back from that budget, and we have eight-hundred thousand dollars in capital reserve now. We want to put more to make it one-point-four million. I think we have enough money where we're at.
Actually, the motion is for seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'm sorry. I corrected myself. Seven-twenty-five, so it would still be one-point-five, two-five million dollars.
Any other discussion? Seeing done, roll call. Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
No.
Mr. Drew?
No.
Mr. Foodie?
No.
Mrs. Keppe?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
No.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number forty-eight, under budgeted finance, please.
Excuse me, forty what?
Eight.
Thank you. Give me a second.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Foodie?
Dever, I saw two line items in the, in the bill list for deductions of state aid and the amount, it's like eight-thousand dollars. Could you explain that?
Sure. We're good. Let me take a look at it.
Okay. I had, it's in this sheet two that you sent us, and I think it is more towards the back.
When there, there are certain items that get paid out, and instead of doing a check to, back to the state of New Jersey, they reduce our state aid. My guess is it's usually tuition for the blind and our tuition for our residential placements. So those are normally the two areas where we have a state aid reduction. Debt service assessment is another one. That is an amount of money that the state takes back from us for giving us funding. So that's another assessment.[1752.88]
I found one that was for twenty-seven, five.
I think that's state aid.
Assessment debt service, SDA.
Yeah, that's the one I just addressed.
What page is that on?
Page twenty-seven thirty-one. That's the assessment for.
I'm gonna feel, it's just a, probably for a loop what I saw.
I was saying, if it's tuition, it would be in that front. Let me see. State facilities, sixty-four thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars.
Yep. What's that one for?
State facilities is a residential placement of a student.
Okay, okay.
And commission for the blind, seventeen thousand, two hundred.
Okay, so it was almost a hundred. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Item number forty-eight? Mr. Foodie?
There were no legal bills. You're doing this for free, John?
No, I don't know where that is. I'll go get it.
There were no legal bills. I figured maybe you were doing it for free for us. Don't know.
Anybody else? Roll call, please. Mr. Babett.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Dever.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
No.
Mrs. Kepi.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robbins.
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr., Dr. Barudin just pointed out that we never addressed number twenty-five, and that was separated out.
We haven't, we've never got it together. I have it.
We're just gonna get there, yeah.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Bailey. Continue, please.
Remove twenty-five.
Anyone who wanna move?
Okay, Stuart, maybe we're not gonna do twenty-five. Mind your own business, Stuart. We're not gonna do twenty-five. I'd like to move item number forty-nine, please, under Budget and Finance.
Second.
Roll call. Mrs. Kepi.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Robbins.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
Yes.
Mr. Dever.
Yes.
Mr. Babett.
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz.
Yes.
Like to move item number twenty-five under Budget and Finance, please.
Second.
Mr. Foodie.
I don't know the legalities on this, but in looking at this list, there were about twenty laptops on this list. I personally, I know I've brought it up in the past, but I would like to give the kids of this district who might not have a computer, a shot at getting one for their home use, especially when we're increasingly using technology. And I just don't know what the process would be. Is it something possible that we could do?
Pete, is that, would you know if that's because of the operating system changes, that maybe we can't use them anymore?
I'd have to take a look at the surplus items that we have available.
In the meantime, I'll just address that. Yes, that is something we could do. We would have to, like here, designate it as no longer necessary for school purposes, and then direct the administration to dispose of it in that way. That's all.
Okay. If it's something that might be a need for, even if it's, you know, five kids, if we can give five kids a laptop for them to use at their home for schoolwork or for...
Contact computers.
Yes.
I don't think that they...
That sounds like DOS one point oh.
Yeah, I mean, anything that has Windows XP, we'd almost be...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
We wouldn't get, that's no longer supported as of April of last year.
Correct. Any merchandise that we do get rid of, that we do dispose of, we would typically, when it's a computer equipment, I actually reach out to a company called Computers for Kids, and they go through the process of refurbishment.
Okay.
And erasing data and stuff like that. Going through that process on our end, you know, if we tried to do that on our end, it would require investment.
Oh, yeah, well, understood, but if it's something, no, my point is, if it's something that we can give to a child in the district and they get the use of, I mean, that's a good thing.
Absolutely.
But if you're reaching out, I mean, we gotta dispose of this through bidding, but if we can't give it to a child, and just in the future if we can, I think it would be a good thing.
Anything that would determine that it would be successfully viable to a student in the district, we probably would be fine.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, something we'll go into. Anybody else? Roll call. Mr. Babett.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Dever.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
Yes, and I hope that in the future that we'll look into possibly giving it to some children if there's a need.
Mrs. Kepi.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robbins.
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to move item number fifty under Budget and Finance, please.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call. Mrs. Kepi.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Robbins.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
No.
Mr. Dever.
Yes.
Mr. Babett.
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz.
Yes.
Before I make my final move this evening, I need clarification on the, I mean, there's a typo, so that should be fifty-one, fifty-two. So, the appropriate move to be made as we close out fiscal year 2015, from the Budget and Finance Committee, will be the following: to move fifty-one and item fifty-two and fifty-three. Can we go now, too?
No, we have to change that one to fifty-three.
Three, yeah.
That's what he said.
That's what I said. Fifty-one, I'd like to move fifty-one, fifty-two, and fifty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Drew.
You're welcome.
And fifty-three's continued on the back. I need a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Doesn't that require our separate votes? Do you have to look on the back? Or is that, is that something that you can?
It doesn't, you could put it in.
Okay. Just checking, I saw that it said that.
Thank you. Roll call. Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepi.
Yes.
Mr. Babett.
Yes.
Mr. Robbins.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Dever.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Can we move on to Personnel? Mrs. O'Brien.
Thank you. I have items one, forty-two presented to the City of Queens Bureau.
I just want to make one correction, if I can, under number forty-one, there's a misspelling. If we look at the, Christy Kerpel, it should be K-E-R, not K-A-R.
On page thirty.
Page thirty, I'm on page thirty. I'm with the employees' names.
Pipe Co-Instructor.
Yeah, Pipe Co-Instructor. Christy Kerpel, K-E-R.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Clarification, that was one to forty-two.
Correct.
Thank you.
And that was seconded.
And I'd like to...
Yes? Thank you.
Six, pull for separate vote, six, seven, eighteen, and thirty-six.
Everything with those?
Just, one to forty-two with the exception of those four.
Okay. Does everybody have those four?
No, what are they?
Six.
Seven, eighteen, and thirty-six.
Thirty-six, yeah.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Oh. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I just want to congratulate Mr. Matlos in getting his doctorate degree. It shows not only a commitment to his job, but a commitment to the kids in this district, and I want to thank him for that.
Thank you, Mr. Foodie. Anybody else? All right. Mr. Babett.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
Yes.
Mr. Robbins.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Dever.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepi.
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz.
Yes.
I'd like to move item six under Personnel.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Foodie?
This appointment is now from July first through October second of 2015. And I'd like to, if it's okay with Miss O'Brien, and I believe Mr. Dever who seconded it, to have six and seven voted on together because they're, the reason I pulled it for separate, I wasn't quite sure. I know that Ms. McQuaid is going on maternity leave, and I congratulate her on being a new mom. She's in for a little bit of a workout for a while with a young one. But Dr. Barudin is gonna stay on as interim director of Special Services through October, and then as a supervisor of Special Education from October through April thirtieth. And I just would like to know why we would meet him after Ms. McQuaid's come back.
The reason for that is, do we currently have a director and a supervisor?
Yeah.
Both positions. So, that's when Dr. McQuaid comes back, she will be coming back, as you noted, as a director, and we still need a supervisor. So, we did do an interview process for a supervisor, and were not successful in finding somebody at this point. So, Dr. Barudin, having experience here, will stay with us till April in that capacity. So, the income or the salary would fluctuate with the difference in the job position. But we're not adding any positions, we're just shifting.
Okay. It's that hard to get, I mean, because I know like with superintendent search, there's a certain time of the year. That goes true with a director or a special services.
Well, you could talk about the interview process you had.
Originally, Dr. McQuaid was going to become the director July one before she trained.
Yes.
We went through an intensive interview search. We had two rounds of interviews, and it decided that neither of the two finalists were appropriate for the job. They didn't have the experience. They had a very limited pool of applicants with any kind of experience and the appropriate certification. So, we had some people apply who were very eager and willing, but did not have the supervisor's or the principal's certification, and the supervisor's, sorry, the supervisor's certification would be a supervisor. So, I approached the administration and said I would like to stay on and flip-flop, you know, until April, when my two-year interim ends. At a, I was headed to South East. So, that was the thinking at the time. And then you would post during the winter for another, you know, tenure-track supervisor.
Okay.
And that was the thinking at the time. So, if, in fact, you know, they find somebody sooner, I mean, I'm always gonna be negotiating that whole thing, so. But that was the thinking.
All right. I'd like to amend the motion, item number four, to vote on item number six, seven, and eighteen.
We already have a motion for six.
Yeah.
Already there's a motion and a second for six.
Yes, and I want to amend that to include seven and eight, because everything that we have to...
You wouldn't amend that.
Not eight.
All right, there was just no discussion enough. Okay? No problem.
Right now, it's only number six.
Trying to, trying to make the move.
You wanna change that.
Yes, I would want to change that.
But eight was never pulled.
No, it's eighteen, seventeen. So, you wanna withdraw the motion and instead move six, seven, and eighteen?
I'd like to withdraw my motion for number six. I'd like to make it six, and seven, and eighteen.
Second.
Okay, there you go.
All in favor of that?
No, you don't even need to do that. The motion is there.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second.
Yes.
Now, you need discussion.
Discussion. Six, seven, eight.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, I'm sorry.
Very quickly, given the high percentage of special needs kids that we have in this district, I think stability and familiarity and experience are extremely important, so anything that we can do to avoid turnover is, I'm sure, helps.
Anybody else? Roll call. Mr. Babett.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Dever.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepi.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robbins.
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz.
Yes.
Okay, item thirty-six, I would like to present for the voting privilege.
Sorry?
Discussion. Roll call. Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, Mr. Foodie.
Last year about this time, I think this came up for a vote as well. I just think that's an awful lot of money for a five-hour workday at the Highlander Academy. It's gotta be something that we can do that's better than this.
Mr. Dever.
Is this a reasonable and fair amount? Is this what the industry normally pays somebody? Are we gonna leave the averages at that number? Is it yes or no?
We had a group in here prior year that was over two times as much, and we found this other firm, and we're...
And it's also same raise occurring. So, if you're building...
There's no increase. So, we think this will be responsible for this.
Yeah, and I can, I wanna add to that, too. And I mentioned this the other day, one of my meetings with the administrators. With this person in place in this building, I've only had two phone calls come to my office for any type of situation that could, you know, be of concern, and my understanding is that when we were paying much more for the other service to be here, it was almost daily. So, it seems to be working in the separate building under the direction of this person, so.
Any other discussion? Roll call. Mr. Babett.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Dever.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
No.
Mrs. Keppe.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
I voted no last year and voting yes this year.
Mr. Robbins.
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz. I know he's doing a great job, but I'm sorry. And I know it's through a agency, but for five hours a day at $550, I'm sorry, I vote no. I'd like to move items number forty-three. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yep.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I would like to quickly make the following statement related to item number forty-three. Oh, yes, there it is. Mr. Resika, I'll be voting yes. I wish you well. You have all my support. As I said last year when you came here, I was skeptical because of your Lakeland background. But you've proven me wrong. You're doing a great job. And whatever you need from the chairman of your budget and finance committee, I'm available at all hours, day and night, as you well know. So, hope you have a great summer. I hope you have a wonderful week, by the way, with all the festive things that are going on. And you should be proud of a job well done and continued success and good luck.
I thank you.
You're doing a great job steering this bus here. That is, as previously stated, not only a large school district, but by far the largest employer in this town, which basically is saying in the region. So, you're not only the superintendent, you're a CFO, you're a CEO, you're a chief, you're a good guy, and congratulations.
Why, thank you, Mr. Bailey. I'm glad I convinced you of that. And as you noticed, I'm not wearing any red and gray as I promised, okay? So, thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other comments or discussion?
And a master educator.
He's right.
Roll call.
Laugh to hell.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
Absolutely.
Mr. Robbins.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. O'Brien.
Without a doubt, absolutely.
Mr. Dever.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mrs. Keppe.
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz.
Yes.
Okay, I have a blue can carry. I'd like to move items number forty-four to fifty-six, please. Need a second.
Excuse me.
Yes?
May I request that forty-five and forty-six be polled for separate votes?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Forty-six.
I'm sorry, who seconded the motion?
Kevin.
Kevin. Ms. O'Brien, did you want to amend that?
Okay, I'm going to amend what I first presented to you. I would like to move items number forty-four, forty-seven through fifty-six.
You might want to include fifty-one as part of the separate for forty-five and forty-six because of correspondence of both those. Okay? Okay?
You don't even need to amend it. Now the motion is for forty-four, forty-seven through fifty...
I need a flow chart.
Fifty-two through fifty-eight.
Question. Roll call. Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Robbins.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
Yes.
Mrs. Keppe.
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Dever.
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz.
Yes.
I'd like to move items number... All right.
Forty-five.
Just forty-five? Okay, moving items number forty... number forty-five. Need a second?
Second.
Mr. Dever? Discussion. Mr. Dever?
I'll be voting yes on forty-five. I'm proud to see a local West Milford resident and also someone who's in our district, being promoted within the district to take over these important positions.
Thank you, Mr. Dever. Mr. Bailey?
I would also like to congratulate Mr. Novak on his ascension into a very important position in this district, director of education. I piggyback on Jamie's comments. Novak is a West Milford person, educated here in West Milford. I can remember officiating Novak as like a JV basketball player years ago. Not that that means anything, only just musing, if you will, why not? So, this is good stuff. Just another example of, you know, the many, many success stories that are produced here in West Milford. And Novak is example one A that we get the public size because we're actually approving, you know, the next step in his career. He's overcome some tremendous obstacles. He's done a great job at UGL. What you're gonna do to replace him up there, that's your job. So, this is good stuff. And these are the kind of things that we never hear about, but we should hear about them. And as long as I'm on this board, I'm gonna bang the drum and I'm gonna cheerlead for a lot of stories. But every once in a while, one comes across my desk, like a Novak, that really is a tremendous success story. So, I congratulate him. I don't know what the future holds for him, but I've known people that have been in that corner office that have moved right into his seat right there. I'm not saying that's the case. We have other fine candidates and there's other people out there. But it's a big step and a tremendous choice. We're gonna miss... What's her name?
Miss Iris. Miss Iris.
But we have a capable replacement, Novak. Congratulations.
Mr. Bailey.
I'm happy to recommend Mr. Novak. I did a presentation earlier. I just don't know if this is gonna work with Mr. Novak and myself sitting at this little table, so we may have to rearrange this, but we'll make it work.
Any other discussion or comments? Mr. Foodie?
It's an important position and I don't take lightly. And I'm not doubting Mr. Novak's qualifications for the job. But I think it's important as a board that we get to be part of the process. Because I'm sure there's questions that I would like to have asked him, and I can think of several right now, that I would like to have asked him in an interview. Just as, this is, as far as I'm concerned, the second most important position in the district. And for that reason, I'm gonna abstain, just because I would have liked to have been included as a board member more in this process. I don't doubt his qualifications. I don't doubt that he's gonna do a good job. I don't doubt it. But I just would have liked to have been part of this and been able to ask questions. Like I said, it's one of the most important positions in our district.
It's duly noted, but there was board representation on the committees. I'm sorry, sorry, Mr. Foodie, that it wasn't you. And I understand what you're saying, that it is one of the second most important things a board would be voting on, so I understand where you're coming from, where maybe all the board members could have had an opportunity to speak with the candidate prior to the appointment. So, it's duly noted, thank you. Anybody else? Roll call. Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Dever.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
Abstain.
Mrs. Keppe.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Robbins.
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz.
Yes.
I'd like to move... Oh, sorry. I'd like to move items forty... item number forty-six under personnel and student cares. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call. Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
No.
Mr. Dever.
I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
Abstain.
Mrs. Keppe.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robbins.
Also abstain.
Mrs. Schultz.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now, just if you want.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve item number sixty-one under personnel. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Dever.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mr. Foodie.
Yes.
Mrs. Keppe.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robbins.
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz.
Yes.
Back to food's personnel for this one.
Congratulations, Mr. Novak.
Okay, special committees and liaison reports, parts and rest. Mr. Robbins?
Yes, last Thursday I was at the recreation meeting. Two highlights. First of all, the senior Olympics. Those people went out and become, and they become first to win the first-place position out of sixteen teams. So, congrats to the senior Olympics. And then the only other thing as a highlight is Bubbling Springs. Day camp is still underway, so for those parents out there, don't hesitate to get your kid signed up. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Safety, Mr. Foodie.
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Mrs. Keppe? Superintendent's roundtable?
I have nothing to report right now, thank you.
Mrs. O'Brien, state county school boards?
No meetings as of now. I think the first meeting will be in September.
Thank you. Mr. Foodie, New Jersey school boards?
Real quick, I... Under the New Jersey school board's webpage, there was a report by the state comptroller regarding legal costs. And I would like to visit this in policy with Mr. Babbitt. It says, "Policy: State education regulations require boards of education to have policies containing specific strategies to save on council fees." And we do have, I don't know if it's in our policy manual, but I think they might even be in our procedure manual on that. I would like to get this into our policy manual. It says, "Similarly, the comptroller's report urges all local government units to establish internal policies and procedures." And we have the procedures, I don't know if we have the policies, regarding the procurement, use, and management of both in-house salary attorneys, that's a new one, but outside legal counsel. I will forward this link to all board members so they can read it if they want to.
And you'd like to bring it up in policy?
In policy. To just review what we have in place as far as policies and procedures and if there's anything that we can do to amend that.
And Mr. Babbitt?
Babbitt is the chair.
And review that as the chair and then...
Good.
All right.
Is there anything else, Mr. Foodie?
That was it.
Okay, thank you. Legislative, Mr. Drew?
Given the late hour, I'm not gonna dissemble about this at great length, but a couple of things. State of New Jersey had man... Sorry, state of New Jersey had mandated that we evaluate teachers. And those evaluations are in ninety-seven percent of New Jersey teachers have been rated as effective or higher, which I think is an outstanding performance and reflects the quality of education in New Jersey. So, I think the teachers should be congratulated for that good job. We already know there's been a removal of the superintendent salary cap, so I'm sorry, Tony, you were slightly too late to get that in a little earlier. A couple of things under consideration. The Senate has passed a bill, I think I mentioned this, that would require textbooks for all students registered for a class. Interestingly, there's been a lot of pushback in Trenton and discussion regarding Common Core and park testing. The Senate passed a bill to prohibit testing of students in grades K through two. And of course, we don't know whether that'll go through the other side of the legislature or not. And the governor of the great state of New Jersey has announced that he is opposed to Common Core but supports park tests. Excusing to me, and I think the only thing we can really conclude is that he's running for office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drew. Technology oversight, Mrs. Keppe?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. West Milford Education Foundation, Mrs. O'Brien?
Unfortunately, I was not at the last meeting, Mrs. Keppe. Do you have a few things to mention about the last meeting? Yeah, thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. We're working on a fundraiser, but we have to have another meeting this Monday, so we will have another report at the next meeting on what's happening.
Thank you. Township Board of Education Joint Committee, Mr. Dever?
Nothing new to report. Last meeting, I didn't get a chance to kind of go over it, so I'll hold it. I know you did, but I didn't want to come out and say thanks for my participation.
Mr. Dever?
I can say that was a lot of fun beating the town.
Where's our trophy?
Ooh, it has the town.
There is a trophy, you got it.
Yeah, where is the trophy?
But we don't have it yet. It's only inscribed, I guess.
Oh, so Mr. Richka still has it.
Very nice.
But that was fun. Thank you for putting that together.
It's for a good cause, thank you very much. Old business, anybody have old business? Mr. Foodie?
Tonight, we... Board voted on approving the following meeting minutes. They were the meeting minutes of May 19th, both workshop and special action and executive, and then the regular meeting of May 26th and also the executive session. And the May 26th meeting minutes, they need to be corrected. It shows that Mr. Bailey arrived late, and it does not say that he left early. He left at 8:40 during our executive session, and I would like those minutes to be amended to fix that.
Make a motion to amend that.
Make a motion to amend the minutes, correct. And Barbara, it's...
It's just for May 26th?
Just for the May 26th, regular meeting minutes, not the executive session, but the regular meeting minutes.
Need a second?
Says that Mr. Bailey left at 8:07.
I saw in my minutes, when I looked at it earlier...
That was the eighth of May.
I thought, yeah, because it was 8:40 on that. I just wanted to correct it.
It's on the executive session minutes?
Executive session minutes say 8:40.
Right.
But on the regular front page of our regular minutes, it doesn't say that he left early. It just says that he arrived late. It should say that he left early.
This kind of should have been brought up during the approval of those minutes. I know you can bring it up during old business, you have...
I...
It probably would have even better had you brought it up earlier.
I couldn't find my note on that, that's why I brought it up now.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
You know, I do want to say something.
Mrs. Keppe?
You know, the minutes should be accurate. I don't disagree with that, but I think that this is a witch hunt at this point, and it's very unfortunate.
Thank you. Any other comments? To vote on the amendment there?
There's no amendment announced, just, well, it's a motion to amend the minutes.
Motion.
It's an actual motion.
Okay.
So, yes, you have to vote on it.
And roll call. I mean, I can't pull the minutes up, so... Do you want to say them? You're saying it reflects that, or...
It's on the executive session minutes. It's reflected on the executive session minutes. And he left executive session at 8:40.
So then...
Okay.
Oh, so it's on...
It's on the executive session.
Mr. Bailey, and Mr. Foodie wants it reflected on the front page of the minutes here.
The regular minutes?
Oh, for the regular meeting. The regular meeting minutes and these are the executive session minutes?
That's fine.
Is that the way we would normally do that?
It should note when the board members left.
It does, only on the executive session.
It's fine to put it on, it should be on the regular minutes.
Okay, so I think we need a roll call. Mary, yes? I'm sorry, Mr. Bailey.
Not at all.
I don't see you there.
Do I have the option to declare myself absent from the entire meeting of May 26th?
No, because you were present.
I was?
There were some parts of it.
Can't vote.
Okay.
Left at executive session at 8:40.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess we should take a vote on it, but it should be reflected in the minutes for the roll call.
Who's changing the second?
I second it.
Mr. Foodie made the motion.
Dever seconded, yes. Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Keppi?
No.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Since it was recommended by council, I will vote yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes, since it was recommended by council.
Any other old business?
Seeing none, we have to close old business.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Will we move on to new business? Mr. Bailey?
As the attorney makes my motion, which will be returning to the infamous number 25, under Budget and Finance, I believe. Is that the right number?
Just do it.
Forty.
Forty?
Twenty-five. No, twenty-five.
Forty-five had to do with the surplus. No, you know the one I want. I'm confused.
You're looking for forty.
Okay, before I get back to number forty, I just want the record to note this, that as Mr. Bailey is close on the verge of becoming the longest-serving school board member in the history of West Milford, which doesn't really mean anything other than I'm good and I enjoy doing it, but I have to tell you, now I've become somewhat of a cool celeb. Because that's the first time in some nineteen and a half years where I've ever actually heard of a situation whereby the minutes were corrected to call out a board member and name a board member for, you know, time left and time arrived. So guilty as charged, but I will not be changing my rap, my routine. I'm an involved person. We're all busy. You're all right, I should be here, but sometimes you just gotta, you know, rearrange your schedule. So on one hand, it's fascinating to me, but I've never heard of such a thing, but I'm gonna, I'm an optimistic person, so I appreciate the positive publicity with the election season fast approaching us, and it's good to know that I've got people shorting my every move, almost like they're stalking me to the minute. That's interesting to me. Having said that, I would like to return to motion number, fill in the blank, please.
Forty.
Forty. Appropriately move item number forty, filling in the amount of $748,000 as detailed in the rest of the motion. Counselor, it's an appropriate time to go through this dog and pony show?
For your new business, you're raising a new motion.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
No.
Mr. Drew?
No.
Mr. Foodie?
No.
Mrs. Keppi?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
No.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Still does not pass.
Motion's defeated. Mr. Bailey?
Counselor, some clarification, because if we count backwards from $750,000, we're going to be here a long time. So having said that, is there a limit as to, before I enter?
There's no official five times for a motion to raise this limit. It's a board decision.
So how, okay, I got you. Then let the rest of my board know, I'm going to put an end to this. I'm going to do it two more times, because I'm an optimistic person. I think it's the right thing to do. Before I move it again, I have a number in mind. Perhaps it would be appropriate for the president to go around the room and see if there might be some common ground that we could all get to, so that we could get this thing taken care of and move forward.
Can I defer that to Mrs. Francisco, who might be able to give us a ballpark figure less than $750,000?
Amen.
I would actually think that, you know, the board should determine what, if any, number they're comfortable with. I mean, anything up to $750,000 would certainly help, you know, solidify the capital reserve fund for in case of, you know, in case the remediation gets started a little bit quicker than we think. But, you know, it's up to the board to determine what they're comfortable with, if they're comfortable with any number. So I really can't suggest anything. It could be 250, it could be 500,000, but if no one's comfortable, I, my recommendation is not going to matter.
Do you have, Barbara, do you have any idea?
How much?
What the cost would be?
For the remediation?
So far, just the monitoring has been over a quarter of a million dollars.
How long are we going to monitor it for?
We have to monitor it for the next...
Quarter of a million.
Nine to twelve, about nine months. We have about nine more months left. And just that is over a quarter of a million, so would be, yeah.
Is there any insurance that would cover the cost of this?
We've submitted to the insurance carrier. They are reviewing everything. They have a consultant that's working with Land Associates, who is the LSRK, and we may get up to 10 percent back, because that's all that this carrier will be liable for, since they weren't really the initial carrier when the situation happened, which was back in the nineties.
So they're trying to minimize their exposure?
Yeah, they're willing to mitigate to a point, but they're also creating a lot of paperwork in order for, you know, for them to even consider anything.
Mr. Drew?
That's a different question. We don't have a motion on the table, but...
Yes.
Sometimes, at the end of the month, or the end of the year, or the end of the quarter, I have some kind of idea of where the numbers are going to come in. Do you have any feel for where the numbers are going to come in for the current fiscal year?
I have no idea what the actual remediation plan is going to be.
No, not remediation. I mean, on the year, how much money we have access.
At this point. Anybody else? Mr. Bailey?
Well, I'm going to make a motion. It'll be my next to final one, and I'm going to move item number forty in the amount of... I'm going to go to my favorite numbers now. This is my high school football number, $686,000.
Second. Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
No.
Mr. Drew?
No.
Mr. Foodie?
No.
Mrs. Keppi?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
No.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Motion's still passed.
You know, can, Mrs. Schultz?
Mrs. Keppi?
You know, since you are the ones that are blocking this, can you guys please come up with a number that's acceptable then, and discuss it, instead of letting Mr. Bailey throw out numbers?
Randomly?
It's not random, I'm giving us four.
I know you are, but there's not...
Mr. Dever?
The budget's 76 million, about. Is that correct?
Seventy-two million.
Seventy-two million. I don't have it off the top of my head. What's 2 percent of 72 million dollars?
1.4 million.
Okay, so we have 1.4 million that we're allowed to keep by law. And we have our budgeted amount, which is the amount we need to run the system, to run our district, and we have 800,000 currently in the capital reserve, which we can use for various projects. The reason I'm voting no on this stuff is because I believe that we've asked taxpayers more enough, we've budgeted the amount of money that we are going to utilize for that, and I understand the principles of it, of saying, yes, it's nice to have savings, something that in case something comes up, you can utilize the money without going into debt. I understand it. I personally think, along with a lot of other people I've discussed this with, that we have asked enough for the people of West Milford. We've budgeted this amount, that's what we need. We have 2 percent, another million and a half in case something goes wrong. We have 800,000 in case something, in case something goes wrong. So I'm still going to vote no.
We're not asking taxpayers for money.
This isn't extra money. This is money that after the audit is completed, it's become surplus.
Correct.
And we're just moving it into the capital reserve account in order to have a fund that we can use for future needs.
Is surplus extra, or surplus part of the budget?
No, surplus.
It has to be moved to the account, because it's surplus money, it's extra money that's beyond what we utilize in our budget.
We don't use any, well, the surplus that we use in our budget is audited, so there is an amount of money that we're required to use in our future budgets. That's the excess in, over the 2 percent.
That money's going to be turned into our next year's, the following year's budget anyway.
16, 17.
It'll be moved in, and hopefully that'll reduce the amount that we'll have to add taxpayers for in next year's vote.
What it will do is sustain some of the programs that you have in place, so that you don't have to cut programs. That's what it will do.
Well, that's what we're here for, to be sure programs are sustained.
Mr. Foodie?
I heard that this evening, we've got another nine months of monitoring.
About, yes.
About. And it'll be probably another three or four months before they even come up with a remediation plan. If the hairbone's minimum, three to four months, it'll probably be six months. So this moves us, where we might need this money, we're 14 months from now. And I don't see us doing any of this remediation, because that, in reading the report that Zurich and some of the environmentalists had done, before land got involved, they're going to be making a hole that we're not going to be able to use that transportation yard for anything but storing vehicles. I mean, they're going to make a hole that, take the 2,000 tons of dirt, and that's what it was, you know, three years ago. That plume, I'm sure, has spread since then, because there's an area on the, on the macadam up there where there's no macadam, there's no concrete, so water's just going into the ground, and it's just going to spread that. And that's probably why we're going on such a long time of monitoring what's happening there. From my understanding, that plume is halfway down from the pumps, down to the bottom of the hill. That's going to be a tremendous hole. We're not going to be doing that during the school year. We'd probably be doing it two years from now, any remediation work. So I think we've got more than plenty of time to, in the future, come up with something in the budget, and I'm still going to vote no.
Okay, so where does that leave us?
Right now, there's...
There's nothing.
No motion.
There's a motion on the table.
So we're still in business.
Mr. Bailey?
Quick question, a quick clarification, Ms. Barbara. What happens to the money if we don't earmark it as you recommended?
It drops into surplus, and then it would be used in the 16, 17 budget.
Okay, to offset hypothetical tax increase, et cetera.
Whatever.
But in your opinion, the reason why you're moving it is, you know, we keep targeting this remediation of the bus detour, but in fact, we could fill in any other situation that might arise. We don't, in other words, we don't have to approve moving this money tonight and earmarking it specifically for remediation of polluted soil.
No.
In fact, it gives you the ability to address any concerns. And just to clarify one more time, it's after the audit, it's what we have left over, and what we're doing here has happened many, many times in the past. It's been held up here before, but it's basically the same type of, you know, discussion and this long-drawn-out procedure we're going through tonight with my colleagues, derailing this train, is something that's taken place in neighboring districts, probably in the blink of an eye. Fair statement?
Most likely.
Thank you. So in other words, going to wrap it up, and I've made this statement a million times, it's good in Vernon, Rockaway, Rainwood, all the districts that butt up to West Milford, but yet, in West Milford, it's not the right thing. That's the part I just can't get by. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yes, of course.
As a superintendent, I work closely with Barbara. Her insight as to what the needs are for the district is excellent, and I commend her because I've worked with many BAs over the course of my career. I think we're focusing on this, as Greg said, the remediation, more so than we need to. We're all aware of, you know, the struggle that we have with fixing roofs. We're all aware of the fact that the high school needs some major work, just looking at the auditorium. There are other places, looking at Paradise Knoll School, and I've sent pictures of barrels in the main entrance of the school, and I really think that my suggestion would really be for you to reconsider and look at the other, the other scope, well, the full scope of what this means. The remediation's important, and I agree with Jim on the sense that it may not be 14 months from now, but the point is, 14 months from now, we may need the money, but prior to that, there are other things in this district with nine schools, plus the academy that we're paying rent for, that need help, that really do need help, and it's, I don't want to say it's a crime, but it's a shame that we have to have students and parents go into some of these buildings on days when they're just, they're embarrassing, you know, and it's just something that I would like to see, as superintendent, us focus in on and really fix these places up, because I think they've been neglected for too long. And again, I respect Barbara's experience over the past few years, and her experience here. So I'm just going to call, you know, to ask for your support, and just looking at all the other things that this district needs for the sake of the kids, I'm not even talking programs, I'm just talking about the buildings. We've spoken multiple times about replacing entrance doors in different buildings that haven't been done, some have been done, and then we end up with a curb or a sidewalk in front of the door that's tilted toward the doorway, so the water's coming in anyway. It just seems, it's baffling to me that, you know, being involved in many projects, that we do things, but we can never complete what we start, and that's frustrating. I mean, we've done some big jobs that have been completed with the boilers and some of the roofs, but there are these day-in, day-out things that we look at. It's, have you driven through the parking lots of the elementary schools? I mean, you really, if you're going in there with a decent car, you can kiss the front end goodbye, to say nothing of the travesty if the kids are running around and they jump off a school bus or something and fall into one of these holes. I mean, I was over at Marshall Hill the other day, I'm looking at a driveway where a school bus actually pulls up and lets kids out, and I'm astonished that we even let this happen, that we don't even address it. That's my two cents, and you know, as the leader of the district here, I appreciate your support, but I would like you to think in terms of that as well. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dever?
If we're painting a picture that there's things that need to be done in this district, like playgrounds, or parking lots, or any of these other things, we should probably consider budgeting for that next year, not utilizing our surplus to fix things that need to be fixed. By all means, let's, if we have things that need to be fixed, let's talk about it, let's get it fixed. Good point, but let's not do that with, hopefully, we have surplus money. Let's fix it then. I'm not, I'm, I'll support Barbara on that. I have no problem with fixing things.
Thank you, Mr. Dever. Mr. Bailey?
I would renew my request for the minority three to maybe give us a number where we could reach common ground, because now I've had the business administrator and the leader of the district tell me what we're going to do with these funds. And, you know, now my head is beginning to spin a little bit, and I'm thinking about the discussions we've had in my Budget and Finance Committee concerning possible upgrade of the high school bleachers, which, by the way, it's a festive night and a great night, and everybody's up there in a good mood, but everybody who attends the festivities of the 25th is going to see exactly what kind of a shape they're in. They're safe, everything's ready to go. That's not my message, but we could have better, and perhaps this type of money could be used to make those repairs. So that's another example, as we begin to wander off into the myriad of possible actions that could be taken using this money. One other thing I want to put out publicly, because I love this part, and I've already done it, and you know what I'm going to say, and the offer still stands. The board buys me the asphalt, I'll supply the labor and material to fix the holes in the district in like 30 seconds. It's what I do, and I've done it before, and you all know it. So I don't want to hear about that. You just get board approval to buy me some of the Hut Mix asphalt, the material I need, and get out of the way, and I'll do it again, because I love that, and so does my family. Next.
Mr. Foodie?
I listened to what was just said, and we're talking about possible things that we could fix, and Mr. Bailey brings up a point that I wasn't going to bring up, but...
I listened to what was just said, and we're talking about possible things that we could fix, and Mr. Bailey brings up a point that I wasn't going to bring up, but in that Budget and Finance meeting, we were told about those bleachers, and that the several hundred thousand dollars is there to fix it if we want to do it, in next year's budget. So I don't want to hear this, that we don't have the money, we're going to hurt the kids. We're doing everything that we can. We've got a lot of cash. I looked at three line items in that Board Secretaries' report, and I found a million dollars in four line items, in four line items. I know that there's, and that's not adding up the hundreds of others that are in there. There's plenty of money. There's plenty of money.
Mr. Dever?
I just wanted to say, I do recognize the commitment you made, Craig, to this district. There's no question about that. You put in more than anybody else in the area. And like you said, the manpower at all costs, you devoted quite a bit of time and money to this district, and we appreciate that.
Mrs. Kepi?
Yeah, my one other concern is the referendum. If the referendum doesn't pass, we're going to have an eight million dollar bill to fix the roofs. So where is that money going to come from, guys? You know, you, it's another question. I'm just throwing it out there, but where is it going to come from?
Anybody else? Mr. Bailey?
Well, I'm going to take my final swing. You know, again, I'm almost pleading, and I can't stand that part, especially given the people I'm pleading to for guidance. So now I'm going to have to, not randomly, I'm giving it some thought. You know, I want to go with the defeated numbers, because that's what my BA is telling me. She knows, that's what she's asking for. So I guess we're just going to follow the same silly tactic that's been going on here for two hours. So failing, I'm giving everybody one last chance to put a number in front of me before I make the motion, or they can make the motion, and wait a minute, my new friend, Mr. Dever, who, thank you for the kind words, but your actions would speak louder if you go back to that motion about Mr. Bailey came in 8:40 or whatever, and vote no on Mr. Bailey, that would be a lot more action than words. But let's hear what you have to say, excuse me, through the chair. Go ahead.
Mr. Dever?
I would go with 200,000 transferred to make it even 1 million dollars in surplus. Yes, that's what I would do. 200,000 transferred into the account, so we have a million dollars in, not the 2%, but our surplus.
Making a motion?
Motion for 200,000 dollars transferred.
Is there a second?
So nobody wants...
Discussion.
So nobody wants to move on that.
There is a second on the floor.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, item number 40, Budget and Finance, 200,000?
200,000, well, an even million dollars sitting pretty.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Hello.
Mrs. Kepi?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Sorry.
Can you get back to me in a minute, please?
Mr. Robbins?
No.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes. Motion carries.
That was a compromise.
Thank you. Okay. Excuse me? I don't, is there any more new business? Mr. Foodie?
Over the, I guess it was our last meeting in May, that this occurred, but I realize that we all have differences of opinions here.
Is this new business?
What's that?
Is this new business?
Yeah, yeah. And I would like to work together with all board members to get things done, but when the microphone, because I'm asking questions, picks up other board members calling me an a-hole, and other board members then covering the microphone so that they're not caught, doesn't sit well with me. I've never called any other board member here, by any other name than theirs.
I don't think this is new business.
This is new business, and we need to...
Is this new business?
I don't know, I don't know what we're doing here.
What we need to do as a board, what we need to do as a board is work together, even if we have differences of opinions, we've got to stop. We've just got to, we've got to work together.
I don't know if we all signed this, but there is a charter that we all received.
Oh, yeah, I signed on to it.
Did everybody sign it?
Oh, yeah, everybody signed on to it, and it was to treat others with respect, and I've tried to do that, but I'm met at every turn by people talking over me, the microphone catching, people calling me, you know, names that don't need to occur, quite frankly. And it needs to stop. We have a difference of opinion, we have a difference of opinion, but the name calling and all that, it raises, it's got to stop. It's got to stop.
Thank you, Mr. Foodie. Mrs. Kepi?
If that's got to stop, then it's got to stop in executive session where the entire board was called an extreme curse word, and when we didn't agree on a superintendent's search, and the entire board, including attorney, was in the room, and we were cursed out. So let it go both ways.
I think that's the kind of, I'll say team building, that really could be addressed at something like a retreat. I'm an Irish pub. I'm serious. Many boards do this at their retreats. This is not the only board that argues and doesn't always get along, and that really is the kind of presentation or discussion that should take place at a meeting, at a retreat, if you have school boards or anybody else coming and kind of facilitate that kind of discussion, sign on, talk about the charter and those kinds of things. That might be something else.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else?
Seeing that move to close new business.
Well, can I just make an offer to, I'm sorry, I am very sorry. First of all, I want to make sure that I invite everyone. I know you weren't invited already, but to please, if you can join us on, well, tomorrow night or on Thursday at the high school graduation, just if you're coming to the high school graduation, if you could be there around 6:30, and business attire, I guess, is fine, because we'll be sitting in the front area someplace. So I'd love to see everybody there, so if you can join us, I would really appreciate that. And I'm talking to everyone, but specifically to the Board of Ed. And also, I think maybe Mr. Novak would like to, if we can give him a moment to say one or two words to the board, I think that would be appropriate at this time.
I just wanted to take a moment, just to say thank you to Mr. Rashika and to the Board of Education. It's been a while since I was putting all my thoughts together, but you know, it's been a long night. I'm honored and humbled by this opportunity. When I began at the Upper Green Lake School, we implemented the idea of a slogan, "Keep Moving Forward", and it really guided everything we did. We never rested on our accomplishments. We always looked to improve. And I, you know, I'm really looking forward to working with the stakeholders in this district to bring that same enthusiasm and level of expectation to the district as a whole, for all of our schools and departments. It's a bittersweet moment. I'm leaving behind a school that I love. The Upper Green Lake School has been the greatest professional moment of my, or professional experience of my career, and I just want to let, I see some members of the Upper Green Lake community here that I, you know, continue to carry the torch of UGL pride with me as I move into my next position. So thank you, thank you for the kind words. I really, really appreciate that, and that's it. Thank you.
I'm done.
Thank you. Petitions and requests?
I thought we did.
No, we didn't.
I kind of, I wound it on you.
Oh, well, there was Debbie and Inga, first and second, to close it.
We'll keep it that way.
I need a voice vote on favor of closing new business.
All right.
Thank you. Petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will first, the five minutes for each petitioner for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other petitions and requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed until the 30-minute period transpires. All speakers are asked to give their full names, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the name of students or petitions and requests. Would anybody like to speak? Yes. Mrs. D'Angelo?
Hi. Hi. Natalie D'Angelo, D apostrophe capital A, N G E L O, 9 Avalon Road.
Is that all I have to...
Okay, all right. I hate to keep everybody here any longer. It's been a long night, but it's been also very entertaining. I didn't come prepared with a speech, and then upon my arrival, I'm kind of glad I didn't come with a speech because a lot of things that I thought were are not since I came here, with him, him, I can say his name right, Mr. Novak, being appointed the new district...
Director of Education.
Director of Education. That is very, I'm getting really nervous, sorry. I'm very proud and very happy, and I saw you from the beginning to where you are now, and I think you're going to be amazing, and the district is very lucky to have him.
That's great, but you need to direct your...
Oh, sorry, okay.
To the board, sorry.
All right. The main reason why I'm here tonight is, I did want to talk about this past year, but like I said, a lot of things since I got here tonight have changed. We now have a director of education, we now have a principal that's going to be coming back. Mr. Rashika has said he would stay for another year. And I don't want to, like, harp on the past, you know, and, you know, complain, but as a senior parent, I just wanted to make people aware that things for the seniors this year definitely weren't what has been in the past. And I feel like in a lot of situations, they were kind of cheated. And I do understand, you know, there was a lot of new personnel, but at the same time, I don't feel like that that should be an excuse. And I also feel that, you know, there was a lot of traditions that we've had, that, you know, many of them are over 20 years old, and several of them were done away with this past year without really any, you know, I don't know, like, from parents, from students, from, like, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I don't feel that an interim principal should, or interim administrator, or should be able to make such radical changes without, you know, at first being spoken to other, you know, discussed more at length, you know, and more people's opinions and things like that. And one of my biggest things, and like I said, I don't want to harp on the past, but being, you know, a parent of a senior and watching ceremonies go on for, you know, since ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade, and then when you get to that moment, and your child isn't recognized the way they have been in the past, you know, I just want to, you know, say that, you know, it was very disheartening. And, you know, this year is over, and we can only go forward, but I had to speak and say something because that's what I've always taught my children, is to stand up, and if something, you know, you feel is not right, then, you know, you should speak about it. I definitely don't speak as eloquently as my daughter, so, but, like I said, the whole game kind of changed when, you know, we came in and I saw that, you know, several changes have been made. I just look forward to next year and, you know, hope, you know, things will go forward in a better direction. That's it.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
William Satovich, C Y T O W I C Z, 694 Lakeshore Drive. Several questions. I'm just curious if the superintendent interview process is inclusive or conclusive of the entire board. The other questions deal with the surplus. It's been reported that there's been a lack of funding for school books, and my question is, how could there be such a surplus when that's been reported? I was wondering if that could be clarified. How many years in a row has there been a surplus? Is there a specific intention besides the one mentioned tonight for the surplus, as in, is there a sync fund for each school to deal with the problems that were mentioned with the, by the superintendent? And it seems that the problems that are arising in terms of the infrastructure are a result of not having these sync funds, and I was wondering if there is a budget, as Mr. Dever had been mentioning, for each school to assess these problems and to deal with these problems without having to dip into a surplus. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jim Agostinelli, A-G-O-S-T-I-N-E-L-L-I. I live at 47 Sherbrooke Drive, West Milford, and I want to follow up on what Natalie was saying before, on some of the changes this past year that has taken place with the seniors. The first thing I'd like to say on a very positive note, I have three kids in the school district, and 30 years' experience in the school district as a parent, and I'm very happy to say that I have never once received a complaint about a single teacher, okay? And I think that's excellent, and I think, I know there's been a lot of changes tonight, or I heard of changes tonight. There are many very good teachers in this school, okay? And I want to credit you folks in the Board of Ed and the teachers. But following what Natalie said, again, I haven't heard a complaint in 30 years of my experience, but these seniors have been robbed these years, this year. And I'll give you some specifics, okay, in terms of celebrations and in terms of their ability to brag, their right to brag as to what they accomplished. The main newsletter was sent out by Ms. Lambert, oh, sorry, I shouldn't say names, but the main newsletter was sent out in June, okay? In the main newsletter was a list of colleges. Now, if you look at all those lists of colleges, we have, this school district has put kids into Ivy League schools, Patriot League schools, state schools, and community colleges, okay? And we have put people into the workforce in terms of trades, which I know, because I'm not the best hands-out guy in the world, that I need people coming to my house and fixing my things. This school district has produced that, okay? Here's some examples. I understand that throughout the year, there are 30, there are three 30-minute recognition assemblies, which under this past interim principal has been done away with, okay, for reasons I don't know. Another example, distinguished honors awards. In the past, distinguished honors award, it has always been where siblings have always been announced during distinguished honors. That was not the case this year, okay? There are five families in this school district, okay, who didn't get that privilege, okay? Let's talk about, how about senior choice awards? You may or may not know this, this is the chance, senior choice awards, kids are up there, they're voted in by their peers, okay? Best hair, whatever, best look, whatever the case may be. Now, people may or may not know, the videos were accidentally deleted off the servers, and if anybody went to senior... and if anybody went to this, to senior choice awards, they had a dancing Highlander for, oh, and here's a candidate, I don't have a video of this candidate, so they put a dancing Highlander out there. That's embarrassing and that's, that's appalling to me. You can't tell me that we don't have the educated people in this school district who doesn't know how to use a computer? That's a rhetorical question. Let me go on, okay? Not only distinguished honors, how about Cablethon? Cablethon was pathetic and I'll be honest with you. There was clearly no organization whatsoever. And, again, rhetorical question, did anybody here watch it?
Yes.
Okay. In my opinion, and if anybody disagrees with me, if it was well done, you can say that, I don't think it was well done. All right? To net, to Cablethon, there was not a Honeywell sent out advertising Cablethon, okay? Nobody knew about it. I had my fir, I heard the first Cablethon the evening of National Honor Society, or the first Honeywell, the evening at National Honor Society. That was a few weeks after, okay? That's terrible planning, right? Another thing, in National Honor Societies, what happens is juniors are introduced into the National Honor Society. Excellent, that part was well done, juniors were appreciated. Last year and years prior to that, seniors who have already been in National Honor Society were able to speak and state what colleges they are going to. That was not done this year. Those seniors were stifled and kids were hurt and parents were upset. The reason why that was done, because I was told that certain kids were quote, "uncomfortable" stating what schools they were gonna go to. My question back, which is also rhetorical, what about those kids who are overachievers? Those kids who volunteered, who studied, who played athletics, who were president of NHS and everything else? Why didn't they get to voice what colleges and brag what colleges they were gonna go to? Okay? Let me see, did I give you enough examples? I probably have a couple more, but I'll spare it, okay? My final statement is, I think the seniors, poor planning, needs an apology. That's my opinion. And as I was told, the responsible party for this is the, finding my notes here, is the West Milford High School Administrative Team and the leadership of that. Right? That's all I wanna say and I hope, moving forward, Mr. Rashika and others, I hope this celebration of seniors can move forward as it has been in the past. Because I think underclassmen sitting there looking at them saying, "I could go to Cornell, I could go to Princeton, I could go to North Eastern, I could do all this." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come up and speak?
Seeing none, move to both of them.
No, no, yes, if nobody else that has not spoken yet wants to speak.
Sorry, I did not. I can't see the TV. Is my name again? Yes.
Natalie DeAngelo, D apostrophe capital A, N G E L O, 9 Avalon Road, Hewitt, New Jersey. Thank you. Okay, it was just, I was really nervous the first time, so I forgot a couple things. And he touched on all the events that I was referring to before, but, these are just two, two other things and they're unrelated and one is in regards to math. And now, neither of these things affected my children, but I've been made aware by my children, like, on a few occasions about it. You know, when everybody comes to Macapin, you know, in 7th grade, everyone's coming from a different elementary school and you don't know where everybody's at and whatnot, so they're all on the same level. But then in 8th grade, you're allowed to, you know, they base, you know, what your academics on, you know, what you've done for the year and recommendations from the teachers. But if you do not take honors in 8th grade for math, when you get to the high school, then you cannot, and I have my freshman write this down for me, if you don't take honors algebra in 8th grade, then you cannot take honors geometry in 9th grade, which would be the next, you know, level in the progression. So you would either have to take algebra over the summer or you would have to double up in 9th grade. So I just wanted, I don't know, I just kinda wanted to put that out there only because I think, like, a lot of students are caught off guard and if they were told this in 7th grade, then, you know, they would, or maybe not, make a conscious effort, you know, to do better in math and, you know, so that they could be in honors. Because most of them, like I said, to my, you know, knowledge, have found out when it's too late, you know, and then are stuck where they are. And the other thing is, and I don't really like bragging about this either, but one of my daughters, I won't name, got a super detention this year. And that in itself is, you know, but she came home and told me that the day that it happened and in what circumstance it was for. But my complaint is, I never got a phone call, I never got an email, I never was contacted in any way to be told that this even happened. The incident itself and the fact that she had to serve this detention, which I was fine with because you do the prime, you do the time. So, but my point is, just for other, like, I just assumed it would be policy that I would be notified in some way. And I think parents should be notified if their child gets super detention. Not just detention, super detention. All right, that was it. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come up and speak? Yes.
Stephanie Markford, 45, Settington Trail here in West Milford. I just feel compelled to get up and say thank you to Mr. Hessler. It has been a tough year. As an employee in the high school, I can, and being in the main office, I can totally understand, changes are never easy for anybody. But I do feel compelled to say that it's a tough job with somewhat near 1,200 students. It's impossible to make everybody happy, but there has been a lot of positive in the school this year and I just think that he should be recognized for it. There's always good and bad, but he has done positive things and I just want, in front of all of you, to thank him for what he's done for us this year. He did not act like an interim, he acted like a principal with a vested interest in our school and I truly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come up and speak?
Seeing none, move to both of them. Second.
I guess I need a motion?
All in favor?
Oh, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
10:45, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening and being very patient. This meeting is officially adjourned at 10:45 PM.
I told the, so, so bad, so, please help us, help the doctor, he's getting pregnant, he's got a bad job, he's, 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 he's,